Dare he do that? It's seven o'clock. Let's get this thing started. Start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
My allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, we don't have to go through all of the niceties since we, everybody's been here before. Many times, and many more times coming up. See what you have to look forward to. First item on the agenda is approval of the last minute. Anybody need any changes? I have a motion to approve. Tim, second to by? Aaron, any other comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, legal notices have been published. I got a, there were no legal notices, if I'm mistaken. We have the BP zero five zero seven dash twenty-one. Mike, you want to come up and give us just a quick overview of what, where we're at with the final site plan amendment?
Yep, good evening. Mike Montalto with Costage Engineering. We appeared at the February twenty-first of planning board meeting, at which time an action, an application was deferred until town staff and engineering comments could be addressed. Primarily, the majority of those comments related to revising the plan set to better clarify what the actual phase one portion of the project was versus the future. Ghosted the future, but really wasn't clear. After talking with town staff, revised that entire plan set. We included an overhaul which picks, pardon me, the potential future building, demonstrating that, you know, we're still looking at the same maximum of a building square footage.
Right.
One hundred and thirty-two thousand square feet. From that point on, the plan set, building, you know, phase through building does not appear. The plan set only includes that which is proposed for phase one. Quick summary of that is that it's the two hundred thousand square foot primary building with potential hundred thousand square foot addition. Rock loading areas, stormwater management. All, you know, the landforms and landscaping on Route forty-one are all to be installed up front. Mass earthwork for the entire site will be done up front as well. We've had numerous conversations with town staff regarding changes in the water system for the project. We originally had a segment point of connection to the water system on County Route forty-one.
Right.
Early looped, we had dialogue with town staff and received a will serve letter from the supervisor's office where we've agreed to three points of connection. When in connection to the west, when in connection to the north, future point of connection to the east.
Right.
We provided on Friday two drawings to town staff, what we, how much, how much of that water system we were proposing to install in phase one? And how much would be in phase two? We have some, received some comments back that said regarding the logistics of how much of that needs to be done now versus in the future. Continue to work with town staff regarding resolving that portion of things. There were some planning comments that, or planning board comments that were received, primarily of some which Doug had voiced, you know, and you weren't able to attend the last meeting. Relative to site lighting, most of those comments relate to the future building, building number two. We have reduced the overall site lighting anyway in the overall project. This particular use does not need high level lighting. So we've actually removed some of the light, dual headlights that were closer to forty-one, even in part of phase one. We acknowledge the comment relative to the eastern portion of the building, you know, building number two. We may even, because now it doesn't have, you know, parking stalls down this side of the building. We, we may actually eliminate a fair amount of that lighting.
Good.
Down that eastern property line in the future. Another comment was relative to landscape, planting sizings and major thoroughfare overlay district. We have not changed the planting sizings from the twenty-twenty-one plant sign ops. Due to the, the just sheer magnitude of plantings that are going on in the site, over five hundred trees in the first phase or whatever. Due to availability at the nurseries and costs in previous plan, we had proposed bare root plantings. That's, you know, what had been presented the last time in approval, and that's what our intent was for this phase as well. You know, we, we didn't change species, size, any, any of the rest of it. Just clarified what's phase one base. With the exception of potential color changes. There had been a question regarding, you know, that we had made a statement, the building was similar. We acknowledge that final plan turned in for sign off will be formal elevations, but wanted to, like, take a look at the colored rendering of what is proposed to demonstrate. Similar to what the building was, you know, in twenty twenty.
Okay.
We have received and reviewed a potential draft resolution. We had no exception with, you know, the items outlined in the resolution. Seem to be quite around the technical nature. We have continued to work with town staff and the town engineer, resolve any remaining nuances along with plans.
Cool.
Should the board move forward.
Well, we hope we can. Find out from staff where we're at, and we'll go from there. Ron?
As you were last meeting, you continued the decision on this tonight.
Correct.
Directed that the engineer meet with town staff, which they have done on numerous occasions, either on the phone or emails or back and forth. And we, Friday afternoon, received a revised drawing, which we drafted a resolution that's before you tonight. And we feel we're ready to go if you are.
Cool. All right, Dan?
Yeah, I have to run some words on this. We've worked very closely with the water and sewer department, fire department, and fire marshal. Looking at all the flows, looking at the water capacity, and looking at what maximizes everything that we can do here. And working with the applicant, and I think we're in a good spot.
Cool. Alan, what do you got?
MRB is working on some easements for VHS and mini tech site to accommodate the water improvements. Otherwise, no real comments.
Cool. Since we have no public, but I would just like to say thank you for working with staff on this. I know that a water change was significant, but it's so much better not going under forty-one than doing that and causing future issues there. And having a loop system. I know the fire department's real happy with that. So I'll turn to Tim. Tim, you got anything?
No, I'm good with this one.
Doug?
Looks mixed up. It looks like.
Right. Right.
The only ones I still don't look concerned with is that, that northern area there with that. Is that gonna be something that'll part surface somewhere? If that, if their storage trailers are, if I could certainly, just from experience, stone's not gonna last. Trailer starts sinking and start dragging the model.
Yep. So the discussion we had at PRC meeting is first of all, it's crush on subbase material, you know, so once it's placed and compacted, you know, we're of the opinion, you know, that it's a dust free, you know, it's not a, it's not a farm laneway. The desire to have that as a stone area, because their tailor's experience and when they build these buildings, additions come along much quicker than anybody ever anticipates. A lot of times they end up in negotiations for the additions, before they're even done with the main, you know, the main building or whatever. It is not intended to be an overall, you know, parking area, and back and they added stone riprap to keep, you know, a barrier between the trucks, whatever. That was a comment that we had offered at the PRC meeting, to ensure that that isn't just a, you know, thoroughfare or travel. Really comes down to, they don't want to put earth back in there to have to dig earth back out for, you know, the building.
But yeah, now that makes sense. You know, I just was envisioning that sitting for, you know, five years, and again, just with the experience I have with seeing trucks parked on surface like that, they don't, it doesn't hold on.
No, and the, the, it's not for, it's not for the truck. These portions here meet the tenant's needs. It really comes down to tailor's experience and putting these buildings up and other projects they've done in terms of how quick building addition tends to come along.
Yeah, so they kind of stack a whole bunch of trailers there with, with the user of that space, and so they kind of want to protect that pad for a future probably.
Makes sense.
Yeah, because on the previous one, they should strike the head, because that was in the base area.
Yeah, and, and part of the dialogue subsequent to that was, you know, we had done an internal calculation of what could be there or whatever, and that hundred and whatever trailers that count that was on there was never intended to be on plan. It was not a, you know, not a trailer parking.
Yeah.
Parking area. Yes, and remove and draw on, you see, riprap extension, whatever, to keep.
Yeah.
And that's been something that, you know, they utilize in other projects that actually keeps the tractor trailers very well defined, even snow plowing operations. They found that that, you know, that when they utilize it, keeps vehicles where they want them, keeps the snow plowing operation.
Cool.
Okay, and that all makes sense. I mean, so that pad elevation is going to be like some, some great elevation then for, so it's gonna be ramped up anyways. Gotcha, okay. Um, no other questions on that, I mean, just the building size, so.
We, we, we moved it.
Okay.
So it's similar, but it wasn't that.
Yeah. But you moved it, okay?
We moved it so that it wasn't, you know, all the way up or anywhere. We looked at what we had done on the previous project. We had to compact or dumpster or whatever. I, I think at one point we were considering the full three hundred thousand. Moved it to this point. With the way, you know, the bays and the discussions of the future work anyway, this made a logical, that was a logical location.
Yeah, makes sense to me too, and that's kind of what I thought. It's probably gonna be coming down the road as well.
Yeah, we, we moved it as a result of.
Hey, Adrian. Aaron?
I'm good.
I don't have anything. So, you're okay with the resolution as presented? So do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the resolution with conditions as presented? Moved by Adrian? Second to by?
Aaron.
Aaron, any other comments? Or take a roll call vote, please.
DeLucia?
Aye.
Dudley?
Aye.
Erin Sweeney?
Aye.
Adrian Bellis?
Aye.
Aye, good to go. Now, I'll say this, because I know you're busy as hell with ten thousand projects. Sooner you get those changes made, get it in here for signature, the quicker we can get things rolling, so.
Very, very eager as well, so.
Okay.
We'll be turning this around, revising the
Yep.
easement documents, stormwater maintenance stuff, all that.
Work with staff, we'll get this thing signed, get this thing rolling for you. Get that customer in here, so we can get them.
Gonna do, let our credit estimate put together, some of all that stuff.
Perfect, perfect.
Get back to where we were a couple, a couple of years ago.
Couple of years, yeah, it's, okay, thank you, Mike.
Thanks, everyone.
Yep. Okay, we got two letters of release for Swetman and Home Power Systems. Everything's good? Signed, sealed, delivered with them?
Finally.
Finally.
A long time coming on these two.
I know, I know. Do I have a motion to approve the final letter of credit release for Swetman and Home Power Systems together? Block them. Moved by, seconded by? Adrian, okay. Doug and Adrian, all in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye, okay, we're good to go on that. Okay, and we did pull the reapproval for Bowerman. That'll come in on the April third meeting. We'll get those taken care of, and then we have open discussion. Ron?
I have two things. Number one, the Department of Transportation in Albany is, I guess, on some kind of vacation, I don't know. But they haven't got back to us.
Don't get me started.
For the release for the tap project. But maybe April, the first meeting that, that happens, we'll have to wait and see. Keep our fingers crossed that we can get this thing underway. The other thing is, I just wanted to let you know tomorrow night, Dan and I are going to the Ag Advisory Committee.
Oh, lucky.
Lucky me, yep. I have drafted a agricultural protection overlay district, which is a recommended action in the farmland protection plan and in the twenty-twenty-one edition of the Conferenza Plan. In a nutshell, what it does is it takes and creates an overlay on those farmlands that are strategic designated by the committee in the farmland protection plan and in the open space index that's coming along. It requires mandatory clustering after the second lot is created in coordination with the Ag Advisory Committee by your board. And as soon as I get a green light from the Ag Advisory Committee, I'll get you a copy of this. We're looking at criteria for telling people, you know, this is what we want to protect. Here's how we can protect it. Move your lot, your building, get it off the prime land, get it over here. And let's continue preserving, protecting that prime land. So, it's coming.
On a side note on that, I just heard on the news coming in, the state of Indiana is making some huge changes to the law to try to keep foreign entities from buying up all their farmland. Huge issue in other areas of the country. Not so sure it's here, but.
What country, what country do you think owns the largest amount of agricultural farmland in North America?
It's China.
No.
No? Japan?
No. Canada.
Oh, really? I know China's creeping up real quickly on it, I can tell you that. All right, anything else, Ron?
No, that's it.
And?
All right, I have a bunch of things. So the first thing is, you probably received a email from a Caitlin Miller. She is who the town has hired to build the open position when Sarah left. When that happened, all the links that we had sent you before with the shared file were attached to Sarah's email. So we had to send you new links. We're working through the kinks of that still. So your next meeting, you will all receive hard packets of stuff as well. Just because there's a lot going on, and I'll go over your next meeting here in a minute. But, but they will hopefully be online as, as well, but we will have hard packets for everybody as well.
Mine worked after I went to my laptop instead of trying to use my iPad and phone. So I don't know what the heck.
I open mine and I can see all the stuff for the next, I mean, I won't be here, I mean, I can see all the stuff for the next meeting and the second.
Yes.
Because she put holes for next month.
Well, she's not, that was me. I'm working on her account. So she, she starts with the town on April ninth, but we are trying to get everything set up.
Right.
So, yes, you're seeing emails right now. That's probably coming from me, working on that computer. And we're trying to, or it's Carol, Carol in my office. Both of us are teaming up, trying to get this still working. And then when she starts, obviously, we're still, there's a learning curve, so bear with us as we go through them.
Is that two-factor authentication, is that part of the new system? I never had to do that before with Sarah.
I think that is part of it.
Okay.
This link's different.
Exactly, yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
This is one drive, which I, one drive, it's probably actually, I think, probably better.
So.
But anyways, I, I get bigger.
But, so, we're working on it, so I need feedback, and we'll continue moving forward now.
Cool.
All right, so your next meeting, we have preliminary for Fowler, the three lot subdivision.
Which will be asking staff to complete the environmental record, so we can, at the second meeting in April, approve the seeker.
Make a determination.
Make a determination of significance, so that the ZBA can then officially address it whenever they get.
A week after that?
Yeah.
All right, so then the next one is the preliminary for Penn Tail, the four lot subdivision. If you remember, they were in front of you back in February, and they had to go for variances as well, so they'll be back. Then we have the final subdivision for Redfield Grove, which is that five lot subdivision, which is all the commercial property, and lot one is the house out on ninety-six.
Right.
You then have a final two lot subdivision for Nate Bowerman, which if you remember, a couple of years ago, you already approved this.
Right.
They never submitted it to get signed. So all the approvals went away, so we're back to getting it reapproved by you. And then, right behind that, if you approve the subdivision, he's looking for the reapproval of his final site plan. Uh, so that he can get moving on his house. And then the last thing that you guys will be reviewing is the solar project over on Commercial Drive has submitted their information. You'll be looking at that to see if it is substantially, uh, I want to use.
We have enough to go forward with.
Yeah, deem the application adequate to set the public hearing. I want to make sure I use the right verbiage.
I know.
So if that's the case, then you'll hear about that meeting. We'll have the public hearing on the seventeenth of April, so. So there's a lot on, on April third, and a lot of this will go to the April seventeenth meeting as well. So April's gonna be a busy month for you guys.
That's good. We've had a couple of light ones, so it's not a big thing. Cool. We know Adrian won't be here for the next meeting. He's gonna skip out on his phone.
Yeah, so, but both, like I said, both meetings.
Second one might be longer.
So, if you, if you have the link that I sent you, everything for the April third meeting is up right now. Comments are being done by staff right now, and with any luck, Ron will have some draft resolutions next Wednesday, and we'll put the packets together and get them out to you.
Cool. Anything else?
No, I think that's enough.
Uh, Colin?
Well, I've got nothing to add.
Well, that's too bad. Okay, nobody else here. From myself, I continue to work with staff on whatever's going on. We know we have the, okay, go ahead.
Sorry, I did, had one, I missed my note.
You start sounding like me, you know that.
I know. The PRC that was scheduled for April fourth has been postponed to April eleventh. Uh, that's due to staffing here. And we also feel that a lot of the people might be away that week, because it's between Easter and the eclipse, and it's the same week the kids have off, so we we have moved it one week later, uh, just for availability of staff, and hopefully more people will show up to the PRC. Sorry.
So, you know, like I said, we continue to work on stuff. We've been attempting to address the issues with stuff blowing around on construction sites. We know that the Country Max is a mess right now. Worse, we've seen it. A lot of styrofoam blowing around. I know that Dan has talked to the applicant or the owner of Country Max to, he'll be out there tomorrow morning picking stuff up.
So we've been working with the general contractor, but I have stepped that up and involved the owner and the owner's GC. So now, hopefully, we are on top of it. It's not the only site that we have with blowing issues. Uh, wind has been a little crazy, if you haven't noticed, as of late, uh, over the last few months, actually, so it's a continuous problem that we're, we're addressing.
And that's all I had. And the board have anything else? Ron?
I, I got one thing. I, I went over today with Augie to look at one of the new apartment units that is going in over there at Hathaway's.
Oh, okay.
Um, there's a model that's now open. Um, I encourage any of you to take a look at it. Uh, I always find it helpful to see the final product compared to what we look at on a piece of paper. These two-bedroom units are really nice. They are, um, all electric except for the furnace. They rent for thirteen hundred according to Sean, uh, per month, which is amazing. There's a lot of, lot of
Yeah.
space in it. And the, uh, the garages, if you want to rent a garage, it's seventy bucks a month. So, you know, that's
Yeah.
fairly reasonable. There are people lined up waiting for them.
I figured that.
It's a, it's gonna be a good project, and it's gonna be built before we know it.
Because they had, they had apartments, they have leased townhouses, then they had for sale townhouses, then they had the villas. They got about every type of housing unit over there.
Well, this, the apartments are all part of the Hathaway, uh, Mark Stevens project.
Uh-huh.
And they have rights to the pool and the community center room and all that. Whereas Monarch, or, not Monarch, but
Villas.
The villas.
Yeah, they don't, yeah.
They don't.
Right, but the townhouses do, I think.
Yep.
Yeah, cool, yeah. Well, that was a, it's a unique property with unique different things on it. We put about every type of housing known to man on there, on there, you know.
Well, we, we would like to see him come in with some commercial.
Well, we'd love to see that commercial. Commercial nowadays is so hard though.
Oh, yeah.
So hard, so hard. Okay, um, board have anything? Go ahead.
I don't know how I got it, how they got my email, um, but I got a couple of emails in the past week or so from University of Connecticut. They are asking local residents to fill out a survey on solar firms. I don't know if it's widespread in this, in this local area, or if it's all across the state. They're asking New York residents. It's a, it's a half hour survey, they say. Sounds pretty in-depth. No. So I'm, we're seeing something coming. And my second thing is, it's not about the sun, but across the street, Maddie's. You, you were talking about, uh, them moving their UTVs from, from the side lot? Whatever happened with that?
So I'm glad you asked. Uh, he, he's been in violation. He, they submit me a site plan that, and an application to come back to you guys for an amendment. I deemed it incomplete at this point, and he's working with his architect to answer the things that are missing on the site plan. Something else I told him to do was to move the current units that are in unapproved locations, because it's if they're in violation right now, so, um, that all happened this week, so.
He also the dumpster on the, uh, outside of his.
Oh, I, I sent him his, yeah, I sent him his site plan that you guys approved. And I said, before you submit for amendment, you probably should get it looking like this, then come in to ask for permission to do things, so, um, uh, so, it's deemed incomplete at the moment, but we are working on it. So.
He's still working in Dansville.
Yep.
So, I mean, I haven't even shown what he sent me to Ron yet, because I immediately opened it up and there was issues, so. Yeah, so I immediately wrote back to him and gave him a list of things and, uh.
Is that the same thing that's going on with that, people that wanted to do the first on that one?
So, they They are. They're on for your seventeenth meeting. They have submitted their finals for the subdivision, so that's another one I have to do a little bit more digging for you guys, but, uh, ultimately, it might come to you. They have submitted their finals for the subdivision, so that's another one I have to do a little bit more digging for you guys, but ultimately, it might come to your decision about how you want to handle that, so.
We can give them the rules or what we want, and they violate them, then if you guys can catch and violate them, then you gotta do what you gotta do.
Right. So it doesn't come right out in code that I have found as of yet. It says they can't have R Vs there. Well, that's, that's where you guys have to play a part here, because.
I'm not saying they're gonna be there twenty-four seven, but they want to be there for a long weekend, living in town is Friday, Sunday, Thursday to Sunday.
Normally, you guys, when you approve a subdivision or subdivision of land, they're not a billable lot, they're really not a usable lot for something, so. If they want to have it for storage of outdoor storage of materials and goods, if that's what you rule it as.
Yeah, we probably need some guidance there on.
So that's.
You guys should give us some guidance on that.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm working on it.
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
So.
Oh, I'm sorry. Anybody else? Motion adjourned by Adrian, seconded by Aaron?
Hold on, before you make that motion.
Yeah.
We, Ron, go ahead and talk about our meeting today.
Okay, you remember Ferretta up on State Street, over by the village of Manchester?
I forgot about him.
Yeah, there you go.
This is the barn and the house.
Yeah. So she was away, and when she got back, she contacted us, and we met with them today. In the meantime, what I've done is I've drafted as part of the local law for the ag protection, a provision that. Drainage operations, equipment and sales and service are a special permitted use in the A A D district. Just like the repairs of the agricultural equipment and construction equipment, taking it away from a temporary use permit. So we met with them today and their, their engineer. We said, regardless of which way it goes, either a temporary use permit or a special use permit. You're gonna have to have a good site plan. So Brennan Marks is the engineer. He's starting to work on drafting a site plan for relating to a temporary use permit. And hopefully we'll see that maybe in May. Temporary's two years to begin with, and then an additional five year.
I think we'll have it as special.
Hopefully, by then, the Ag Advisory Committee will figure out what they want to do. It's only seven years. It's been twenty fifteen, eight years now we got to this point.
So I am gonna answer Aaron's question on the signs, as long as Ron's all done with that conversation.
I beat the hell out of it.
All right. So, um, Country Care is doing the landscaping for the one coming out of Victor into the town on ninety-six. I'm hoping Doug is gonna tell me that the other ones are gonna be handled by the Boy Scouts here. So, and we'll pair up with the Chamber and we'll, we'll get those landscaped as well. I've talked to Highway. They are, when the weather gets a little bit warmer, going to stain the poles before the landscaping goes in. So that they will be a little bit of a darker brown color.
So then, come springtime, I, I just won't bug you. I'm going to you now.
So, but no, they're.
You know, if you know anybody of high rank in the Chamber of Commerce, I'm not saying who, okay? But don't forget that median sign on three thirty-two.
Oh, oh, I do have an update on that. There is a median sign coming off the thruway. There's a little one that. Yes, but we are getting closer to having a location for our fourth sign, similar to where it was before. Because Shumway doesn't own that property anymore.
Well, good.
So we might be able to get our easement, and we will not be landscaping around that because it's gonna be down a hill, and we're gonna put on big poles, but.
And.
And everybody's gonna be coming this way now, down.
And on a side note, the storage units there that have the white doors on them, those are just plastic coatings on the doors. Once they come off, they'll be all over the building. I saw those, I go, no way, we can't have white friggin' doors. With that, anybody have anything else? Motion adjourned by Aaron, seconded by Adrian, all in favor? Aye. All right, we're good to go.